Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Kent, Chief of Police and Director of Public Safety. Thank you all for being here today and choosing to watch this broadcast online for those of you guys that are at home. Also, a special thank you to City Council, Mayor Farrah Khan, Vice Mayor Anthony Quo, and Council members Larry Agren, Mike Carroll, and Tammy Kim, who are with us today or watching this event online as we discuss this very important subject. It is with heavy hearts that we hold this Town Hall. Although we take extreme pride in the level of policing and safety we provide you and the rest of our community, we cannot deny the real reason to why we're all gathered here today. The tragic, horrendous, and terrible shooting at Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas, that happened, and all the mass shootings that have happened in our nation, has brought a great amount of sadness and fear to our communities. To lead us in a moment of silence and prayer, I'd like to invite my dear friend and great partner to the Irvine Police Department, Pastor Ralph Williamson from Christ Our Redeemer, for a few words of prayer in honor and memory of the nineteen children and two teachers we lost in Uvalde, along with the countless number of victims and families that have suffered as a result of these brutal acts.
Thank you, Chief Kent, for the invitation and the opportunity to present this invocation, this prayer for this event, and also want to recognize the Mayor, Mayor Khan, and also Vice Mayor Quo. Let us humble our hearts for a moment of silent prayer, and at the conclusion, I will have a special prayer for this occasion. We pray blessings upon the many, excuse me, as we gather this evening in the city of Irvine, as citizens of this great community, we live, work, and enjoy the blessings of life in. We thank you, God, for the privilege and the opportunity to be here for this school safety Town Hall meeting. We pray that you would impregnate our hearts and minds with clarity of purpose and vision as we strive to achieve excellence in this meeting tonight. Guide our thoughts with a clear understanding of the tremendous responsibility we have for improving our community's safety, its security, and well-being. Broaden our horizons to take us beyond selfishness to a sense of community consciousness and concerns for our children, our families, our schools, religious institutions, and businesses. We pray blessings upon the many faces, the cultures, and ethnic backgrounds we represent. As you bless us, dear God, we pray that we too will become a blessing to others in all we do. We also pray blessings upon our nation government, the people, and the leadership that rule over this great land of the free. We pray your divine protection upon the many who serve our country, state, and city day and night. And finally, we ask that you would direct us, O Lord, in all our doings with your most gracious favor and further us with your continual help. In all our work, let us begin and end with you. Hear our prayer, O Lord, amen.
It seems too frequent that we gather under these circumstances. It was just three weeks ago that we gathered at Christ Our Redeemer for a vigil in light of the Irvine Taiwanese shooting, church shooting in Laguna Woods. These are terrible times indeed. Our love, our thoughts, and our prayers go out to the families, friends, school staff, and communities impacted by gun violence. Before we get into our presentation, I'd like to turn over the podium to Mayor Farrah Khan for a few words.
Thank you all for being here tonight. This is definitely a very important discussion that we want to have with you. I just want to recognize my council colleague, Vice Mayor Anthony Quo, is here with me today. And, you know, the tragic gun violence in our region and our nation has understandably invested our, it has taken our attention. It has provoked us to come out and wonder if we're safe. And today, as you guys are here, and I thank IPD for putting this Town Hall together, I want everyone to know that the council's priority, as we're developing the city, as we're creating new innovative ideas, is the safety of our community. That is definitely the most important component of our job, is making sure that our community feels safe and is safe. And so tonight, as you go through the Town Hall, please ask questions. We want to make sure that your questions are answered, make sure that you feel comfortable once you're done here, and again, know that we are here as your partners. Should anything come up, any questions come up afterwards, you can reach out to me, reach out to the Vice Mayor, reach out to our amazing Irvine Police Department, and know that we're here for you. So thank you so much again for being here.
We have designed tonight's presentation in a manner to cover three important aspects and critical aspects in keeping our schools and children safe. The first part of this presentation will cover our response and what that encompasses in the event we do have a mass shooting at one of our schools. The second portion of this presentation is specific to our Youth Services Unit, which will be presented by Youth Services Supervisor Sergeant Tim Petropolis, and the training they endure that is specific to their roles as school safety officers. Additionally, we'll cover their overall day-to-day function, responsibilities, as well as partnerships and interactions with school staff, students, and parents. The last portion of this presentation will discuss the preventative measures and partnerships in place to prevent an event like this from ever occurring in the city of Irvine. That portion of the presentation will be presented by Lieutenant Frojahid, who oversees our general and specialized investigations divisions. At the conclusion of the presentation, we'll be available to take any questions from the audience that we may have. With that said, I'd like to take a few moments and highlight the great work of the men and women of the Irvine Police Department and our proven track record of protecting our diverse community. A key component to our success is who we hire to be a representative of the Irvine Police Department. Our personnel are amongst the highest educated and well-trained in modern police tactics in the industry. We recruit from our community via social media, college job fairs, and outreach to cultural and religious centers to ensure we are hiring those that are reflective of our community. Upon being hired and completing the academy and field training program, we continue to invest in our officers and provide them with hundreds of training hours to continue developing their skills, tactics, and confidence in being able to handle dynamic and dangerous situations like an active shooter event. These trainings are provided and implemented via classroom instruction, tactical drills, and scenario-based exercises. In fact, just last month, we trained our officers in an active shooter training scenario at one of our large retail centers, using firearms loaded with training rounds that created a training environment that was both stressful and realistic. Overall, our commitment since our inception in 1975 has been and will always be the safety of our residents, businesses, schools, religious institutions, and our community as a whole, especially our children. A child's life should never be a statistic. I don't just say this as the Chief of Police, but I also say this as an Irvine resident and a father myself. Geographically, the city of Irvine is divided into three geographic areas, the University, Crossroads, and Portola areas. Within these areas, each area is divided into three beats. As we address evolving crime trends and overall public safety, our geographic policing model, our, excuse me, our geographic policing model deploys officers within the geographic beats to become more familiar with specific trends associated with their area and the neighborhoods that they patrol, but also to familiarize them with the key locations that include schools, religious institutions, and shopping centers, just to name a few, within their beat areas. When our officers do respond to an emergency, they do so quickly and safely. All our patrol vehicles are equipped with GPS tracking systems that display in our communications bureau so that the dispatchers can assign and coordinate responses based on the location of the officers nearest to the emergency. During school hours, on-duty personnel are consistent of youth services officers, motor officers, area traffic officers, detectives, SWAT officers, and of course, patrol officers. So regardless of where the emergency may be, our personnel will be quick to respond and take action. A recent example of that was a swatting called Irvine High School a few weeks back, where we had over a dozen officers on scene within just a few minutes. Additionally, our city's intersections are equipped with a signal preemption technology that provides the right-of-way, essentially giving a green light for police cars, fire engines, ambulances, in the event of an emergency. Our vehicles are also equipped with state-of-the-art tools and equipment that support our officers in virtually any hazardous situation. This equipment includes patrol rifles, deer breaching tools, and lifesaving medical equipment like tourniquets. Overall, I can confidently say that is my expectation and our officers' understanding that if we were to have an active shooter incident at any of our schools, our sole mission is to get there as fast and as safely as possible, go in, save lives, and stop the threat. As you can see, our personnel are trained and equipped to handle emergencies, particularly active shooter incidents at schools. But as you may know, police officers may not be the first responders to these events. The true first responders may very well be the teachers, staff members, and administrators at our schools who care for our children every day. Many years ago, we approached our school leaders with a plan to train staff members in every city of Irvine school. Not only have we met that objective, we continue to train school staff every year. Again, our continued training has been possible because of the leadership, the support, and partnership we have with both Superintendents Walker, Johnson, and their Boards of Education, and some of them are here in our audience tonight. Thank you for being here. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sergeant Tim Petropolis to cover Youth Services.
Thank you, Chief Kent. Again, my name is Tim Petropolis, and I'm the sergeant in charge of our IPD Youth Services Unit. I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity to speak about our program, because I'm very proud of this Police Department, and especially the Youth Services Unit. The Irvine Police Department Youth Services Unit is comprised of a lieutenant, a sergeant, school resource officers, also known as SROs, that have oversight of the high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, all within the city of Irvine. In addition, we have four full-time DARE officers. That stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. Our unit personnel are not new officers out of the academy, but rather very experienced and highly trained. They're selected from our Patrol Bureau and other units within the PD. During this process, during the selection process, we also include school officials. The mission of the Youth Services Unit is to work in partnership with the Irvine and Tustin Unified School Districts to provide school campuses throughout Irvine community safety. SROs are sworn police officers assigned to school sites in order to maintain safe learning environment by showing high visibility on our campuses. SROs investigate crimes, incidents related to their assigned schools, they counsel students and their families, and provide resources to school staff. The strong, long-lasting relationships within this program have created an environment of trust, which has and continues to facilitate the flow of communication, especially when there might be something suspicious or concerning behavior. This is crucial and aids us in focusing on the prevention of violence. This is the largest Youth Services Unit for any single city within the County of Orange. Now let's talk about training. Our Youth Services Personnel receive ongoing, very job-specific, advanced officer training. They are trained and prepared to quickly respond to a shooting or a critical incident on campus. Recognizing that school shootings are dynamic and fast-moving, we made a commitment to send all of our SROs to special training programs. We want our officers, who will likely be the closest to a critical incident, to be on school campus and have the very best tactical training. Some of the training includes being a part of the National Association of School Resource Officers. This ongoing training consists of ethics, the SRO as a teacher, counselor, and mentor, social media, cyber safety, violence and victimization, school safety and emergency operation plans, threat response, and of course, violence prevention. All of our SROs are trained in the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, also known as C-STAG. We attend a yearly SRO Summit, which provides Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, or OCAC, training, juvenile law updates, building search tactics, and active shooter scenario training at a local high school. We attend the Safe Schools Conference, which highlights school shooting debriefs, threat assessments, drug crisis information, bullying, mental health, and behavioral health information. In addition to all of that, we have internal active shooter exercise training at IPD. Now for the Drug Abuse Resistance Education, or DARE, program, which was formed in LAPD all the way back in 1983. We adopted this in 1987, and we've never looked back. DARE has come a long way since the original "just say no to drugs" model. As you can see on the screen, it's now a contemporary, multifaceted program that focuses on social, emotional learning theory. We provide ten forty-five-minute lessons, and as you can see, these lessons include traffic and pedestrian safety, risk and consequences, drug, vape, and alcohol awareness, peer pressure, working as allies, communication skills, digital citizenship and bullying, empathy, helping others, stress management, and getting help. As you can see, we've kept the drug component in DARE, especially nowadays with the fentanyl crisis that we all see. This program, just so you all know, is taught in fifty states and forty-nine countries. Irvine PD has the only DARE program in the County of Orange, and we're one of few programs still left in the state. I might appear to be biased, but I personally believe that we're the best in the business, and I'm sure a lot of you in this room will agree with me. And I actually have recent proof of that, because Irvine PD's DARE Officer, Alex Mendoza, has recently been named DARE International Officer of the Year, and he will be honored next month at our thirty-fourth annual conference. This celebrity is in the room right now. He's back there. If you'd like to stand up real quick, Alex, I'm sorry, but please stand up. Round of applause. Not just America, the world. Continuing, thanks, Alex. Our DARE officers are able to make meaningful connections with our students and truly serve as mentors and teachers, which pay dividends in later years. Very frequently, I hear stories about former students who have grown up approaching their DARE officer and thanking them for the impact they made, and just filling them in on how great they're doing. I've seen that several times, and I hear about it all the time. Furthermore, these DARE officers also often respond to situations or calls at the elementary schools they serve and are in an immediate first line of defense. I can't stress enough how critical the program is when it comes to the development and trust it builds among our youth. Part of preventing violence is having everyone be vigilant for the early warning signs, and if the relationships are not there, then important information won't be reported. The effectiveness of this program has been incredible. Our Youth Services Unit has many duties, and in addition to what's already been stated, here are some on the screen, but not all of the outreach and great work they do, but we thought filling one screen would be okay. I'd also like to highlight the Irvine PD Explorer Program, which is also on the screen. This program provides our youth, who may be interested in a career in law enforcement or community service, with a comprehensive volunteer experience, including training, competition, service, and practical experiences. Character development, physical fitness, good citizenship, patriotism, and volunteerism are integral components of the overall program. Through their involvement in this program, explorers develop an awareness of the purpose, mission, and objectives of law enforcement agencies. And here's a very important part, explorers are oftentimes seen as leaders on their school campuses. In fact, our very own Chief Kent was also an Irvine PD Explorer. Regionally, we're connected to SRO programs throughout the county and have hosted meetings to make sure we're all learning and sharing up-to-date information with one another. IPD has an in-house Waymakers Program that aims at assisting youth and parents with classes, counseling, and providing other resources to keep our youth on the right path, which aids them in avoiding legal consequences. The Youth Services Unit also maintains relationships with both the Orange County Juvenile Probation and DA's Office. And of course, our partnerships with both public and private schools is a very, very unique strength within this city. Schools within the Irvine Unified School District currently have access control doors. These are remotely lockable, which significantly improves our ability to secure the locations. This technology allows IPD immediate access to our schools during an emergency. Every IPD officer has electronic keys, which grant them access to all of these doors within our schools. Every school within the Irvine Unified School District has clearly marked lockdown buttons at their sites to help ensure a fast response in the event of an emergency. Next, there are 1,716 camera views district-wide, which the Irvine Police Department can access in the case of an emergency. With a touch of a button, the doors can secure. IPD Dispatch is then immediately notified, who then logs into the system and relays real-time information to responding officers. We all know how critical intelligence is and timing. Our SROs work very, very closely with campus security every day in order to ensure the safety of all of our children. All of these features and tools are very valuable in the case of a critical incident when working together, especially at a command post. More on school partnerships. We are part of a Safe Campus Group, which meets monthly where representatives from IPD Youth Services Unit, the schools, school risk management, student support, and campus safety come together so that we can focus on crime trends and safety concerns. We participate in public safety quarterly meetings, which include IPD, the Executive Directors of Elementary Education, Secondary Education, Student Support, PIOs, School Risk Management, and Campus Safety, where we come together to engage in deep-dive discussions regarding safety and security challenges. We also partake in emergency preparedness inter-agency collaborative meetings, also known as EPIC meetings. These are meetings to discuss high-level emergency management planning, which includes numerous private and public stakeholders. In addition, we attend emergency safety partnership meetings, which include elementary schools, K-8 schools, middle schools, high schools, and other department representatives to focus on school emergency policy development. I'd like to thank Dr. Stephen Bain from IUSD, who coordinates these meetings. Finally, the size and scope of the IPD Youth Services Unit is directly related to the community's support for police presence in schools. While similar programs in other parts of the country have diminished in recent years, IPD's Youth Services Unit has continued to grow and remains robust, again allowing us to have the largest Youth Services Unit within the County of Orange. In Irvine, the community's support for police in school remains strong, and we thank you for that. Now I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Jahid, who will be speaking to you about the Threat Management Unit.
Would you mind holding that till the end? Is that okay? When we're done, we're going to have an open mic. We'll have some proctors out in the audience to help you answer those questions and ask those, if you don't mind. Okay, thank you. So good evening. Thank you Sergeant Petropolis for your presentation. Before I begin, I would like to start tonight by thanking the leadership of our public and private schools for their partnership, for their continued support with this program. The full access to the schools that you have provided helped make this training concept a reality. Please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Frojahid, and I'm a former Beckman High School Resource Officer. Throughout my career, I have worked closely and collaboratively with our public and private school partners. In addition to my work at our schools, I was a member of the Irvine Police Department SWAT team, field training officer, a detective, a school resource officer, and an active shooter trainer for both our police officers and our education partners. As my career progressed, I was promoted to the rank of Sergeant, where I supervised teams of officers, and I supervised the Violent Intruder Training Program. This is the programs that were provided to our schools. Currently, I'm a lieutenant in our Investigations Division, which includes our Threat Management Team. Later, I will take a few moments to discuss the Threat Management Team's important work. Before I begin, I would like you to know, I have been, and I'm fully invested in the important trainings provided to our partners in education to ensure the safety of our children. Now I would like to begin by explaining the School Crisis Response Training Program. The School Crisis Response Training Program is a direct result of the strong relationships between the Irvine Police Department, the Irvine Unified School District, the Tustin Unified School District, and our private school partners. This training was developed in 2007 to help provide a high level of training and ability for those entrusted to the care of our children at our schools, who of course are our teachers and our school staff. Over the last several years, the Irvine Police Department has provided this training to every public school in the city of Irvine. That includes all elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. In addition, we have also provided this training to the teachers and staff at a number of private schools within the city of Irvine. These trainings are interactive and require participation from everyone involved. The first of these trainings uses what we call a tabletop exercise. A tabletop exercise is a training concept where decision-makers are asked to solve a hypothetical problem that is presented to them. The training scenario that we use is the worst-case scenario, a school shooting. This group generally includes the principal, assistant principal, front office staff, head custodian, and teachers. The scenario starts with someone in the school becoming aware of an emergency, a person on campus with a gun, or shots being fired. We walk them through how the lockdown would be started and who would make the announcement. Who would call 911? We talk about how teachers and students would likely respond. We discuss what to expect from the police response, and we finish with discussions about reuniting parents with their children. This exercise takes about two hours and is an important learning tool for everyone involved. The training accomplishes three goals. It assists the team in evaluating the school's overall emergency preparedness. It provides the Police Department and the team the opportunity to positively reinforce successful policies and practices, and it helps identify ways to get better. There are also key training concepts during this training. The first training concept we talk about is awareness. We discuss the necessity of being aware of what's happening We discuss the necessity of being aware of what's happening in and around the school. School staff will likely be the first ones to see there is a problem on campus, and the sooner they know about the problem, the sooner safety procedures can be started. Part of this awareness includes the understanding that they are responsible for ensuring that only those who need to be on school grounds are there. And there needs to be a plan when confronted with those who have no apparent business on campus. We share the importance for visitors to be required to check in at the front office and be readily identifiable. We reinforce there needs to be a school culture that emphasizes the safety and security of staff and students at all times. And this begins with a high level of awareness. The second key topic is the Violent Intruder Response Best Practices. We have all heard of the phrase, "Run, hide, fight." Our trainings in schools examine what this really means, and how our educators and school staff can be prepared to make the decision if they ever needed to. This topic is on everyone's mind in a mass incident, but the concepts taught here can apply to all kinds of scenarios. What if there's a burglar in a police chase who runs on campus? What if there's an unknown person who's looking to get on campus and shouldn't be there? The concept is the same. Our educators have to be ready to understand the difference between a school lockdown or a shelter in place, and what those concepts mean. For the purpose of school safety, a lockdown is when staff or students are secured in a lockable space, generally a classroom, bathroom, or closet because of a perceived threat, and a lockdown is usually announced over the loudspeaker by a member of the school During our trainings, we talk about how lockdown is actually communicated to the rest of the school, and what it should sound like, and who has the ability to make the announcement. We train that all staff should be able to make a lockdown announcement when they see an emergency on campus, and we talk about the importance of starting the lockdown procedure immediately so that safety protocols can be started by everyone on campus. We also explain the importance of making sure a 911 call is made as soon as possible, and what information is shared with 911. The third training concept is teacher empowerment. We train the teachers, they should be empowered to make decisions that are in the best interest of their student's safety. This includes the ability to initiate a lockdown and to call 911 when they see an emergency without having to go through the front office for permission. We emphasize that the Irvine Police Department wants to be called as soon as possible when a problem is identified, even when it only appears to be a minor issue. It could be for something as simple as an uncooperative person in the front office or an unfamiliar vehicle in the parking lot. The Police Department wants to be called to quickly investigate these concerns and prevent them from becoming bigger issues, and we expect them to err on the side of We talk about the keys to success that school staff can use to create a safer environment. The idea that a locked door is a safer door, and keeping all doors locked that can be locked is important. We talk about where to physically place students during a lockdown, in a locked room. When possible, stay away from windows and out of sight to keep behind cover and low to the ground. We tell them to have an alternative plan, a Plan B, to know where they can go if they are not in a safe place or a threat is moving towards them and their students. This may involve taking advantage of additional exits from their classroom. If the threat is at one door, have another pre-planned escape route and a method of communication. We talk about what to do if there's not a lockable space or a safe space nearby. This relates to what can be done when students are not in a classroom and outside during lunch or PE. Our teachers have been trained to direct students to the nearest safe place, which can include off-school property and into a nearby neighborhood, or a community park. This is an important distinction from other emergency plans that have existed in the past across the nation, where specific locations had been identified as a place to go during that emergency. Our training and the district's policies will help prevent teachers and students from potentially moving towards danger in a crisis. Developing a plan of action is the last and most important part of this training phase. It walks the team through the decision-making process and helps them consider what we learned during the tabletop exercise. The plan of action is what teachers and staff will do in the first few moments of a crisis while the police officers are responding to that emergency. This provides an opportunity for the staff to apply the information they have learned and become mentally prepared with their plan of action. It's important to mention that the Irvine Police Department brings this training to each specific school site. Being at their school helps provide a high level of realism to the experience and an increased personal impact for the teachers. They take these trainings very seriously. These trainings are designed to reinforce the district's emergency policies and procedures, to provide a forum to share the important information that was learned from the team's participation in the tabletop exercise. It provides the opportunity for staff to ask questions about what they have learned and receive immediate feedback and clarification. The goal is to make sure that the training is of high quality and very memorable. To summarize, we introduce them to five training concepts that were discussed during that training, including the importance of awareness in identifying problems before they become a crisis, what a lockdown is, and what it should sound like, and how they should respond. We discuss teacher empowerment and how each of them should be feel empowered to make decisions that are in the best interest of their safety, of their own safety, and their student's safety, giving them permission to start a lockdown and call 911 when they are first aware of an emergency. We talk about keys to success during a crisis, finding a lockable space or going to the nearest safe place. We discuss the importance of keeping doors locked that can be locked, and always having a Plan B, and moving away from a threat that is coming their way and a place to go when they are outside. And finally, we talk about developing a plan of action. That plan of action for the moments during a crisis while the other first responders, the police, are responding. The Irvine Police Department recognizes training is essential to ensuring officers are prepared in the event of a violent intruder. Therefore, in addition to training our educators, we train all of our police officers. The training is multifaceted, to include responding to an active shooter incident to stop a threat. In fact, as the chief mentioned just last month, we held a dynamic active shooter training at one of our local retail centers where officers did just that. These types of trainings ensure we are all better prepared for that worst-case scenario. As you can see here, our officers are sprinting towards an active shooter scenario in training. Now, I would like to take a few minutes to talk about our focus on prevention. We know that it is far better to prevent a tragedy than to respond to one that has already happened. Forensic psychologists that have studied decades of past active shooter events have discovered what they call a pathway to violence. This is the timeline typically taken by those who have engaged in school shootings. They start with an idea to do harm, they develop a plan to carry it out, they prepare by gathering the means to inflict that harm, and finally, commit the act. This pathway does not happen in a moment. It takes time, and generally not days, more like weeks, months, and even years. Research has also taught us that those who commit this type of violence almost always share important information with family, friends, teachers, and even over social media before the attack. And if that information had been known by the right people, it would have been an important opportunity to intervene and stop the violence before it even happens. So what this has taught us is that we must focus our attention on identifying those that could be on the pathway to violence, and through a variety of resources and programs, get them off the pathway before any violence is ever committed. To help accomplish this, the Irvine Police Department created the Threat Management Unit, which in cooperation with our school partners is positioned to do just that. One such program has been our adoption of the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Model, or CSTAG. CSTAG is a threat assessment tool that assists school and law enforcement who work together on threats involving students. This is a collaborative process that looks at both minor and significant issues. These threats are assessed by the team and tracked over time to help with the early identification of anyone that might be on the pathway to violence. I mentioned earlier that most of the time that school shooters often share their intent with others before they attack. Studies have also shown that many times other students were aware of concerning behavior or statements, and had law enforcement been aware, there could have been an opportunity to intervene. To assist with providing students and staff the opportunity to quickly and anonymously share this type of information, the Irvine Police Department and our school partners implemented a program called Say Something: Anonymous Reporting System, founded by the Sandy Hook Promise. This is a web and phone-based app accessible from any computer or smartphone, and it was launched in March of 2020. To date, nearly 500 tips have been anonymously received. The way it works is that each tip is received in a dispatch center via phone call, text, or email. These tips related to school safety are immediately shared with our school resource officers, school administrators, school counselors, Irvine Police Department dispatchers, and other members of the Irvine Police Department, myself included. These notifications are received 24 hours a day regardless of whether school is in session or not. Once a tip is received, our dispatchers create a call for service and quickly collaborate with other members of the team on the best course of action. Many times, the best course of action is a police response. This occurs very quickly, minutes after initial notification. We have had some great successes through this program, including helping people who were suicidal, and had we not received the tip and responded, could have taken their own life. Additionally, we have our very own Access Irvine app that provides our community with the City of Irvine and Police Department resources at their fingertips. This includes anonymous-based reporting of criminal and suspicious behavior. A little earlier, I mentioned the creation of our Threat Management Unit. Now, I would like to take a few minutes to share with you the different components of the team that work collaboratively to prevent and mitigate school threats, as well as any other threats within our community. IPD recognized the need to have a devoted threat management team. Threat assessment and threat management involve looking at both criminal and non-criminal means in order to keep our community safe and disrupt that pathway to violence. By combining a variety of very important units under the umbrella of Threat Management and under the leadership of one supervisor, the Irvine Police Department is able to apply a comprehensive approach to threat management. This slide highlights the four key areas within our Threat Management Unit. Our Intelligence Unit quickly has become the experts in GVROs, or Gun Violence Restraining Orders. This is a civil law that enables officers to seize firearms from someone who may be a danger to themselves or others, regardless of any pending criminal charges. It can also prohibit and prevent the purchase of a firearm by a potentially dangerous individual who may seek to purchase one. Our Intelligence Unit is also the lead investigative body on threats to businesses and houses of worship. To enhance communication with the important stakeholders in our community, the Irvine Police Department hosts a private security partnership collaborative that meets quarterly to discuss and train to topics that enhance the overall safety and security of privately-owned business and retail centers within the city of Irvine. In addition, the Threat Management Unit hosts an Intersafe Security Partnership, where those responsible for the safety and security at the many houses of worship in the city of Irvine meet quarterly to discuss issues and enhance security. The Intelligence Unit also has its own dedicated full-time crime analyst, who in addition, assists the unit in working collaboratively with outside agencies to share and vet information, is an expert on scouring social media for any threats that may involve Irvine schools, businesses, and other institutions. Our Mental Health Outreach Unit was formed approximately 10 years ago and is the first of its kind in the nation. Agencies across the country use the Irvine model as a goal to strive for. In addition to providing mental health follow-up to those suffering from mental illness in our community, the team also works closely with the extensive mental health and wellness coordinators that support our schools. I am also proud to share that the Irvine Police Department has recently partnered with BeWell OC to provide a new resource to our community. BeWell's Mobile Crisis Response Team responds to calls to assist those suffering a mental health or addiction-related crisis. This includes our youth, and is yet another tool that can provide early intervention to individuals and families in the city. Also, part of our Threat Management Unit is the Task Force Officers. These are officers that are assigned to several county and federal partners. We have an officer assigned to the arson unit of the Orange County Fire Authority to investigate arson-related crimes. We have a detective assigned to the FBI with a focus on counterterrorism, an officer assigned to the Orange County Intelligence Assessment Center, or ORCAYAC, which is more regionally based and focused on detecting, preventing, and investigating criminal and domestic terrorist-related activity, including early detection to incidents in the local Orange County area. We have a full-time officer dedicated to the Orange County School Mobile Assessment and Resource Team, or SMART. The SMART team supports schools in situations where there are threats of violence involving weapons. SMART works closely with school officials, the probation department, the district attorney's office, and the healthcare agency's mental health team to help resolve safety issues. Our SMART officer is a former SRO like myself, and he works closely with our SRO team. In fact, just this week, I was notified, the SMART team and Officer Sean Cronin are receiving a Distinguished Safe Schools Award from the National Safe Schools Committee. Finally, we have our very own Threat Mitigation Officer. The Threat Mitigation Officer is responsible for training our school staff and how to respond to the acts of violence on campus, as well as their role in helping prevent those acts in the first place. The Threat Mitigation Officer works closely with our school leadership to ensure they have up-to-date information on best practices and conducts training for our school staff at all of our schools. The Threat Mitigation Unit is the Irvine Police Department's commitment to preventing acts of targeted violence in our community, whether it's a business, house of worship, or a school. We have the right people in the right positions to give us the best chances of early intervention. This concludes my presentation, and I would like to invite Chief Kent back to the podium.
As you can see, a lot happens behind the scenes to ensure we're keeping our schools and our children safe. What makes this department special and unique is the partnership and trust we have had from all of you, our community, over the course of our history. Moving forward, our commitment is to continue keeping Irvine a safe community for all those who live, work, and visit this amazing city. We will do so by holding true to our mission, vision, and values. We will continue to provide only the highest level of service to our community and consistently look for innovative ways to maintain public safety while staying engaged with our diverse community. I want to conclude by showing a video that we intend to post on our website and social media platforms after tonight's presentation. We plan to repost the same video shortly prior to the start of a new school year in August. Let me see if this is set to go. Hi, I'm Irvine Police Chief Michael Kent. I wanted to take a moment and highlight the great work of the men and women at the Irvine Police Department in making school safety one of our top priorities. To maintain our mission in remaining in partnership with the community, we continue to establish ways of keeping open lines of communication with the two school districts and all private schools within our city boundaries. Along with our Threat Mitigation Unit, the school resource officers and their officers within our Youth Services Unit act as liaisons between our schools and our police department. They provide training to prepare school staff, as well as our partners in private security in the event of a critical incident. As a department, we maintain a high level of training to our patrol officers by engaging them in critical incident scenarios using various locations within the city as training environments. By providing repetitive, high-stress, real-life, critical incident training, coupled with outfitting every officer with the latest equipment the industry has to offer, our personnel will be ready, prepared, and able to quickly get to and stop the threat. As you can see, our personnel are trained and equipped to handle emergencies, particularly active shooter incidents at schools. I can confidently say that if we were to have an active shooter incident... I can confidently say that if we were to have an active shooter incident, our sole mission is to get there as fast and as safely as possible, save lives, and to stop the I'd like to take this moment and publicly thank Mayor Farrakhan, members of City Council, City Manager Chi, for your continued support of public safety and the Irvine Police Department. We're extremely fortunate to have the backing that we do from you, which allows me to lead one of the finest police departments in our nation. Thank you again for being here tonight. Myself and my colleagues are available to answer any questions that you may have, and I think we have a couple of our folks with microphones. So if you have a question, please feel free to raise your hand, and we'll go ahead and address it for you. Yes, sir. Blue shirt, a blue hat, yes. I got a microphone coming to you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chief Kent, and thank you so much Sergeant and Lieutenant for the presentation. I think I can speak for everyone. We have a deep appreciation for everything that you and the prior chief, sorry, I'm a little nervous. I think we owe a lot to everyone who works at IPD. I have three quick questions. My first question is, how many members are currently on the Mental Health Outreach Unit? My second question is regarding SROs. Our current policy, do your SROs currently carry firearm, and are they authorized to use live ammunition in an active shooter scenario? And my last question, number three, is according to the IUSD website, for firearms on school grounds, there's a board policy from BOE 3515.7, superintendent not grant permission to any individuals to carry a firearm or ammunition on school grounds. Legal reference, California Penal Code 626.9, gun-free, School Zone Act of 1995. I assume, because it's already a penal code and it looks like there's a California state law, that there's no policy from IUSD or IPD to change this current policy of not allowing, not granting individuals to carry firearms or ammunition onto school grounds, and I was hoping for a confirmation from that. So once again, that was a question on Mental Health Outreach Unit, SROs, and firearms on school campuses. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. I think I got them all. As far as our Mental Health Outreach Team, it's comprised of four mental health officers, but it's not just specific sworn officers. We also have professional staff that are assigned to the team, and we're partnered with other resources from the county and the newly-launched Bwell of OC that Lieutenant Jahid just talked about. So we definitely have a very robust team that is ready to address all kinds of mental health calls within our city boundaries, and we work, again, collectively with different partners from around the county and the state to be able to provide the best resources for our residents, specifically our youth, that I truly believe have suffered a lot over the course of the last couple of years with everything that's happened, from COVID to some of the other issues going on and forcing them to stay at home, and we have seen a little bit of rise in mental health cases specifically to our youth over the course of the last couple of years. Your second question, as far as our School Resource Officers and the type of equipment they carry, so our School Resource Officers are just like any other police officers. We carry the same equipment. If we have a firearm, we definitely have real bullets. So they carry the same equipment that our patrol officers and some of the other folks that do provide police services throughout our city. And the last question, as far as carrying firearms on school grounds, you're right. It is illegal to carry firearms on school grounds. Of course, law enforcement, there's an exemption for that, which allows us to be present and engaged and work collaboratively and in partnership with school staff. Thank you for the questions. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
And also with tools over the long run, because oftentimes, I was a public school specialized teacher, oftentimes, teachers are the only authority figure that certain some children will come in contact with during the course of their day. Teachers usually can pick up on things in students, you know, on campus or in their classroom that others may not. And oftentimes, we'll see a divide, we'll see a difference between how kids are at school and how kids are at home. Oftentimes, it's night and day, 180-degree difference. So I've taught in low-income, low socioeconomic, gang-ridden neighborhoods where students had nothing at home, but they got everything at school. Irvine's not like that, but we do have some low socioeconomic kids as well. What is being done, what can and what can be done to empower teachers more with tools, solutions, because they're oftentimes the first point and the last point of contact for these kids? So for example, with the Uvalde school shooting, that 18-year-old didn't have a prior, either juvenile record, or there weren't prior red flags, but they were there, they just weren't reported. What can be done to empower teachers to intervene before something like that happens? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Great question. So there's two answers that are, I should say, my response is going to be two-parted. First is, we definitely have a very robust program and interaction with our school partners, especially school staff when it comes to day-to-day interactions, our teachers, as you heard Lieutenant Jahid talk about. I think the most important thing for our teachers is to be able to stay engaged with the training that we provide, the school provides, and also recognize, recognize and look for signs that could be a red flag. If a child says something, or, you know, their behavior starts changing, something that just doesn't feel right, I think that's where it's important for school staff to step forward and bring that to the attention of others, specifically the Police Department, to be able to engage it and prevent something from definitely happening. But as far as talking about, you know, they're there with the children all day, yes, absolutely. And it is a very big responsibility that is on the shoulders of these teachers. As parents, we hope that they're following the rules. We hope that they're up to date with their training and that they are paying attention, whether doors are open, windows are open, or whatever it may be, to make sure that our children are safe in their care. And I could tell you, just based on the staff and the different interactions I've had with our schools and our teachers and other administrative staff, we truly have amazing, amazing people out there that care for our children. And it's sad, it's sad that this day and age, we have to go through the Uvaldes and the many other incidents in our history, in our recent history, to give us that reminder of, oh yeah, I should be paying attention, oh yes, I need to be doing this or doing that. So hopefully, this doesn't happen again, but we know the reality of the world that we live in, this is probably going to happen and happen very soon. It's, like I said, it's the ugly part of the history that we're going through right now, but what can be done? And I think tonight gave you an idea of what we're doing within our own community. And I could confidently say that other cities, other school districts, along in partnership with their police departments, are doing similar things to make sure that all our children, regardless of the neighborhood that you're living in, have that peace of mind, that security while the children are at school. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you for putting on this informative presentation, and I'm so grateful for the relationship that IUSD and IPD have. I believe that all of elementary school campuses, or most of the elementary school campuses in Irvine, have a before-and-after-school program on campus. So my question is, are those staff members who are licensed professionals on campus included in the active shooter trainings? And if not, would IPD extend that invitation to them?
Thank you. So from my understanding, is all school staff are part of this training? And we do have the Train the Trainer type of programs that are available, so we do train a good portion of the staff that pass that training along, and the expectation along, the other folks that maybe come in before school starts or after-school programs. I could tell you, my own daughter, with her after-school programs, you know, just talking to some of the staff that are there, obviously knowing what I do for a living, they always ask for advice, so what do you think, what do you think? And they do have that training, and they do have that interaction with our folks. It definitely gives me the peace of mind as a parent and as a chief of police that our department is definitely engaged with our school staff, whether it's a before-school program, after-school program, during the school hours, that our folks are definitely engaged in interacting with our school personnel.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think I saw a hand go up on this side of the room. Right there.
Mike? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you for doing, whatever you guys are doing is great. It's a great city to be in, God, we pray to God, we don't have to face this ever. And another quick question, I feel is, are the outskirts of school are monitored by a camera in each and every school? Like, you know, you start seeing the person coming. He's not hiding the, well, the big rifle or whatever he has in a pocket. So is the outskirts visible by cameras in each and every school? My question may be silly, I don't know, I'm just throwing things in my head that's coming.
No, absolutely, it's not a silly question, it's a great question. As far as cameras at school campuses, I can tell you that all our Irvine Unified School District campuses do have cameras. Like they mentioned, it's almost 1,800 cameras at all our schools that we have access to as well. If we do have an emergency, our dispatch center can log into those cameras and give the officers that are responding a play-by-play of what's happening. Now, as far as the positioning of the cameras, they're all strategic. So as the design went into, where do we put these cameras, it was done for multiple reasons, one of them being exactly what you said, being able to anticipate who's coming on campus, on campus, and surrounding areas of the campus. So a lot of that, there's a lot of strategy that goes into that, but again, it's not a silly question, it's a great question, absolutely, there's a lot of thought that goes into that.
Is there, like, is there, like, a group of people who are watching their security officers, school security, somebody is also watching the side of the IPD at their end? Are they watching? Like, I'm in an office. Am I able to see somebody's, like, coming, walking towards the school with a gun? Like, at the school level, they can see somebody is assigned to do that? That's what my question was.
Absolutely. Mr. Bean, not to put you on the spot, but you actually have a great seat, because you're sitting right next to the person that can answer that question for you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Stephen Bain, Director of Risk Management and Insurance for Irvine Unified School District. Again, great question. To Chief Kent's comment, add a little value to that. So we do take a look at all of our school campuses, and we want to have cameras not only in the interior of the schools, but we also want to have it on the perimeters as well. To your question about who's monitoring the cameras, we do give access to all of our school administrators, they certainly have access in their offices. Most of our elementary schools, if not all of them, and I believe all of our high schools also have monitors that are up in the front office, so when you walk in the school, you'll actually see a monitor. And we also have our campus safety folks that are monitoring that as well remotely.
So another thing is, just like we do the health assessment, you know, before, is there a mental health assessment possible at every level, grade level? I know the little ones are not going to do this, but like, at least the ones you think middle school and up, don't mean to be rude to any middle schoolers, but my point is, just so that any mental, kind of gives us some signs and symptoms coming through can filter through, you know, or mental health assessment. I know it's a strange thing, but can that be done? Just a thought I have. And then, are the schools locked down constantly during the school time, or they are still open? The buzzer, they can come, visitors can still come in and out, looks like, right, basically?
Yes, there's specifically, the schools are designed so if there was a visitor to come on campus, there's one point of entry and exit. But to answer your question real quick about mental health, and I want to give others an opportunity, and they could definitely come back, but as far as putting in place some sort of a mental health assessment of students, that would definitely be a school district decision, but what I will tell you is, the school district has actually a very robust counseling program, and they are connected with and trained to identify red flags, you know, amongst the students, something that just doesn't look or doesn't feel right, and to be able to have that interaction and provide the resource that a parent of the child, and again, partner with the Irvine Police Department to be able to address whatever issue that they do identify. So, thank you. I think, ma'am, you had a question over here.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for Sergeant and Lieutenant. I have one question regarding the DARE program. So my kids, I think like the other students, they have the DARE program in elementary school till fifth grade. So for them, mostly it's fine, you know, for the whole week, you have a lot of activities, and then they know it's, like I said, no to drugs, that's the most important thing. But I think there's something missing from middle school and high school. So after fifth grade, they never think about all these things to learn, unless they see, oh, I have the DARE shirt, you know? And then, when the thing happened in Irvine High, actually, that morning, one of my kids were exactly in the classroom, because that day, there's a, it's a senator or someone, somebody was visiting the school, and he came to school early, and then when the alarm was on, and he just had, followed the, what's it, the order, whatever, and then hid under the table. So he did not, like, either call 911 or something, or just text me what happened. I learned from other parents, and later on, from the principal, from email, I know what happened. So what I'm thinking is, like, when really things happen, the kids really forgot what to do, except it's scared, you know? Yeah, that's the thing. And also for high school students, that's the group for dealing with the drugs. So that's the thing, they try to hide from parents. I know one parent who was struggling with the kid. So that's the important thing, to have some kind of training, not that long, a very short training or something to reinforce what they learned before. So that's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So in regards to staying connected with our youth, it definitely goes beyond elementary schools. We have a middle school resource officer that's connected to all our middle school population, as well as the school resource officers that are connected to all our high schools. Each one of our high schools has a school resource officer assigned to it, and that's the design, exactly what you talked about, is maintaining that connection between law enforcement and our youth, but also with the partnership and collaboration we have with the school districts. In regards to being able to identify issues that are out there as far as drug use or whatever it may be, that's where our partnership with our partners from the school districts is essential. They have their own security officers that are assigned to the campuses that are trained to also identify some of these issues and that are brought forward by other staff on campuses, or things that they observe and identify themselves, and we work collaboratively with them to be able to address these issues. And again, it's not about having legal consequences or whatever it may be with our youth, but again, it's more about the outreach and the education and being able to provide resources to, again, maintain that trust and partnership with our youth.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elena Garmaj. I'm a system coach. I have three children, and with your permission, I would like to say a few words. My English is not very good, sorry about that. And I thank all the staff for the very important information for parents, teachers, and for our childrens. And my proposal today, much has been said about safety and training, and that's just my part. I believe that true security begins in our family, and I think you will agree with me. And today, I want to say, in connection with the tragic events in Texas, I want to offer my help for parents, teachers, and everyone. Let's unite and help the families of America, our children and teachers in school. The future of our children rests on our shoulders. Many parents are disparate and many do not have sufficient knowledge of parenting. Many parents are disparate and many do not have sufficient knowledge of parenting. As a mother of many children and a specialist, I propose to hold a series of lectures in Orange County, as well as in the cities of California. And I will read some topics. For example, psychological development and age crisis, infancy, early childhood, preschool age from 3 to 7 years, junior school. Yes, yes, yes. Give me two minutes, please. Emotional burnout of parents and teachers, the same. Children aggression, family education, and so on. If you're interested, I can give this list with all topics to the commander. And I left contacts, we can discuss this issue. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous.
No, no problem. Thank you for sharing that. Yes, we could absolutely talk offline and have further discussion. Thank you. One more question?
So March for Lives is an organization that was founded in response to the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting, and it is actively working to building towards a community where students are supported, not policed, through the prioritization of counselors and equitable resources. And so we'd like to begin by saying that School Resource Officers, also known as SROs, only gained a major presence in schools after being heavily subsidized through the war on drugs to enforce zero tolerance policies. And as a result, they have solidified the school-to-prison pipeline. Schools with SROs are more than five times more likely to arrest students for disorderly conduct than schools without, as school districts fall back on these officers to address minor violations. Situations are often mishandled and dealt with punitively, resulting in unnecessarily harmful consequences for both students and families. This has contributed to the disproportionate rates of arrests of students of color, and for those with disabilities, such rates are even higher. To be clear, the purpose of March for Lives is to question the effectiveness of SROs for student safety, not the intentions of such individuals or programs. There is no evidence suggesting that SROs make schools safer, and SROs have time and again failed to prevent or effectively intervene in school shootings despite the fact that the police presence in schools has heavily risen across the nation. While some find comfort in having officers on campus, it's clear that SROs simply are ineffective at preventing or de-escalating violence. In the 2020 to 2021 proposed budget for the city of Irvine, a total of $3.7 million was dedicated to the SRO's DARE and Violent Intruder Response Training. Meanwhile, students needing mental health support or simple guidance find it exceedingly difficult to meet with a counselor or specialist due to disparagingly high student-to-counselor ratios, found especially here in California. SROs are not qualified to be counselors, and adding a counselor's duties onto their roles does not justify their place or inability to prevent violence on campus. Given that SROs are ineffective, we must look elsewhere to address student safety and health. Increasing funding for counselors, social workers, and mental health specialists who can prevent and identify conflict before it happens is necessary and must be prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you for that. What I will say is that I'm extremely proud of our officers, especially our Youth Services Officers, and everything that they do for our community, and especially in our schools. And I could definitely say with all confidence that our teachers, our school staff, our administrators, and our children and parents definitely support our Youth Services Officers and everything they do. So thank you. Thank you all for being here, appreciate it. Again, appreciate the partnership, have a good night. Thank you.